I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. Good morning online. We are looking at the agenda. We have the Fair Board, and I think they, a couple of members would like to present today, so we'll just give a report. We can do that. Let's just add them right after the consent agenda, right? Well, right after open forum. We can do it open forum or consented, or, but we'll just add beings that are here, and we'll just Fair Board report after the open forum. Any other changes, additions to the agenda? I would like to pull the regular claims and the human service claims out of the consent agenda this week, just because we had, we did not have them at Finance to review, so we'll just give a little bit extra time if people have a question. I don't know if you do or not, but I just wanna, just because we didn't have them at Finance. So with that, any other changes?
I have a change is to pull all zoning off, because that was told everybody at the hearings, this is gonna be on the board on the nineteenth, and I text Kyle about it last night, he thought it was
Yeah, I would agree, but it was said at the Planning Commission meeting on the thirtieth, that all planning and zoning issues would be heard at the meeting on the nineteenth.
Isn't that what you heard?
That is what I heard.
Okay.
That was in the paper, I think you quoted that, too.
The radio.
Yeah, radio.
Okay.
What other?
Any other discussion on that item?
No, when I read through the notes, we're also gonna have another special meeting on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yep.
Finding of the facts meeting on the eighteenth prior to the board meeting on the nineteenth. We haven't even had that yet, so.
Um, okay, I won't mention my, but is that the wish of the board, then, pull all those? Pat, did you talk to Kyle about that, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, we get the stuff from our department, and so it's in there, because the department has asked it, but I don't think we got communicated to pull that.
I pulled one, but I don't, he didn't say to pull all of them. I just pulled one.
All of them.
I would recommend to pull all of them.
Your discretion.
The whole, the date that's coming to the County Board, that was announced that that meeting is the nineteenth. And that's what everybody's like.
Very good.
So do we need a motion for that?
Oh, well, we'll just, on the agenda, we'll remove that, but I re-looked through them. Now, I can't remember offhand, was there anything? Was there anything that was time-sensitive for the applicant? I mean, some of them were, most of them were unanimous.
Yeah, there really wasn't a problem, but.
There's that one that was very contentious, but.
I, I don't think so, 'cause I think Kyle looked at it, 'cause at the beginning of the Planning Commission meeting, the chairman asked Kyle when this would be heard, and he said it would be heard on the nineteenth.
Okay.
At the board meeting on the nineteenth, for all of them, not just
Right.
one of them.
Well, I'm just I'm just wondering.
If there's one of them, that could be time-sensitive.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, if there's something in there that
I didn't notice. Um, it's on P, it's way down there, one.
It seems to me that it's not, they're not, but.
Christopher, I put a quick text in Kyle here, maybe we'll get a response, but while we're waiting for that, could I just get some direction? As you pulled the claims out, where would you, where would you place those back in the outer treasures office? Do we review that?
Yeah, just under heard.
And I got, I don't know if I pulled this out, or what, talk about, but I got one thing on the consent agenda, Resolution nine twenty-three one A. There's no dollar amount in the resolution, and I believe the grant was for, the grant is for seventy thousand in the notes, but it's not in the resolution. I think it's on page eighteen.
Oh, yeah, nineteen, I think. So just when we, when we pass the consent agenda with that, just make, we'll add that in.
That's it, okay.
Right now, we're on the agenda, so do you want to pull that, or, Patrick, is it appropriate just to add that amount in when we approve the whole consent agenda for Resolution one D, seventy thousand, it's just an inclusionary thing, it's not a discussion.
Keep it in there, Commissioner Nelson, it's, I've seen ten thousand in here, what?
That's the one that, that's, that's Resolution twenty-nine twenty-three one D. And that's the one that came before.
You're talking the victim service grant?
I'm talking the first grant, yeah.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Twelve. On page twelve.
Well, the, the actual, the actual resolution is on page eighteen, but it starts on page twelve, yeah, the, the information.
Okay, so should we, is it, you want to just remove all of them from planning and zoning, being the wrong date was, in case someone did want to come? I think that probably.
If you get back, you know, we could always probably, some is time, so, pre added.
If it was advert, if it was stated, it, I would, I would lean on the side of caution rather than.
There's an answer on all of them, it's the nineteenth.
And I believe one of the, the one that wants the change of zone from agriculture residential, or to residential, had intended on coming, so if, and he was told, or at least that's what he had said when he had talked to me, and I had suggested, and it was said at the beginning of the meeting that we would do it on the nineteenth.
Okay, so we're gonna pull all planning and zoning, is that agreed?
Yep.
Okay, so removal of planning and zoning, pulling of those consent, and adding the Fair Board report. Any other changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes? Corrections, corrections addition.
I had one.
Had a couple of minor things, nothing significant. On page one of four, under appointments, motion second to appoint Keith Zacharyson to replace Abby Anderson, set it in place of. Then the other thing I, we didn't have in the motion, but under Sheriff, number three of, on page three of four, at number two, motion second to approve Resolution two D, federal equipment grant to purchase a CDO. Well, it's not, it will be to purchase if we get the grant. So to so how do you, how should we say that? It's, it's not gonna purchase it unless we get the grant.
Condition, condition it.
Condition on the grant.
To purchase on condition of receiving the grant with twenty thousand dollars, so. And that was it.
I had one, it's not a big deal. On page two of four, under the last paragraph, under over ninety days, where it says Good Point Technology, Inc., it should, probably should be a period after the C.
Boy, that is
I know, it doesn't matter.
Remember his mom was a teacher.
That is. Any other changes? Entertained a motion. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now, consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve the abatement for a travel trailer, the Resolution one A, that should just include the seventy thousand dollar grant award, and Resolution one D for veteran service grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Erica, second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Open forum, Nate, anyone on open forum? Well, yep, so this is for the Fair Board report, we'll just go ahead with the report, and if you want to come up and, and just state your name for, Peggy, for the record-keeping, and all three of you.
Thank you for having us. For those of you who don't know me, I am Carla Lindquist. And I am on my first term with the Fair Board. So I still consider myself in a state of learning, so we've been learning a lot the last few years. And then with me today is Matt Thompson, who is one of our newer Fair Board members. And our goal here today is just to kind of come before you guys and give a report of what we've been up to, what we hope to be up to, and just kind of give you an overall view how the fair went this year, so. As you all are aware, we started out quite toasty with the fair, so our numbers on Wednesday and Thursday for the fair were down a little bit compared to what we were hoping for. But we recovered nicely on Friday and Saturday, so we don't have any exact numbers prepared, but just kind of an overall. Our carnival was up this year compared to last year. Our food stand vendors were flat, but in conjunction with that, our four-H food stand was up about three thousand dollars in gross sales, so that was kind of a nice pickup for the fact that the food vendors were a little flat. The grandstand, again, we started out really slow on Thursday when we had the tractor pull because of the ninety-degree heat. But again, we recovered nicely on Friday and Saturday with the demo derby and the turf, the trail racing. So we actually finished up compared to last year in grandstand gate fees, so using that as a measuring stick, I think we did very well. We also noticed that there was an increase in the number of exhibitors this year, which, I mean, is a great measurement of, of the popularity of the fair. For open class, we were up just about eighty exhibitors, and that doesn't count the chocolate chip cookie contest that we did in conjunction with Project Four Twelve this year. That brought another fifty-three entrants into the fair just to show off their chocolate chip cookie recipes, so that was kind of a fun addition to this year's fair. So I would say overall, you know, we're looking to have a very good fair, and we'll have a financial report that we'll share at one of our Fair Board meetings that's due to this date by November first, so it will probably be another month before we have that available to share with anybody. But just wanted to give you an update there.
So we were doing a lot of projects this year for the fair. One of, painted the schoolhouse, which was in, in need of a paint job. There was some significant cracking in the open class building and the concrete, so we were able to get that repaired. Putting concrete in the poultry barn, which I think that was a savior for a lot of folks, it makes it a lot easier to clean in there, and then we're also able to utilize that space for offseason rental now. Electrical work in the livestock barn, which was very helpful with the heat this year, we were able to add a significant amount of fans. I think that helped animals stay cool. And then the four-H kitchen remodel, you want to go into detail on, on what was done in there?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I think you guys are well aware what we did in there, and hopefully you guys all had the opportunity to go take a peek, but it was amazing how much difference that new ceiling and the updated bathrooms were noticed, and lots of comments. The overall temperature in the kitchen stayed cooler with the new ceiling and the insulation. Just having the automated fixtures in the bathroom for like the toilet paper and paper towel dispensers really cut down on the amount of product we used in those restrooms, which surprised me probably the most, because it just seemed like we were always running to the restrooms to put more paper towels and stuff in the dispensers, and with the automated dispensers, and control of how much people got at any one time. It was amazing how much less product we used, so definitely noticeable differences in there, and lots of positive comments from fairgoers on the updates, so just thank you guys for helping facilitate the funding for that project, because it was, it was a big undertaking. It took the better part of the summer leading up to the fair to get that all done and, and ready for us to occupy the space again, so thank you guys for that.
Oh, big one, I, a lot of people might not know, so we added ventilation, so those bathrooms are well-ventilated, now you notice there wasn't water standing on the floor like there had been in years past, so that's probably a great, great improvement.
I think one thing to note, you know, with all the improvements, I mean, as a, as someone who served in that four-H food stand, there's a lot that needs, needs to be done, just on, you know, refriger, you know, refrigeration units, and, so I mean, we just have to start pecking away at it. It's not like we want to spend a lot of money on, and have the top-of-the-line kitchen, but some of those refrigerators are, are losing more air, or coolant, and I think that they're keeping things cool, a couple of them, so. I mean, I think we just keep plugging away at it, and, and a little bit every year, and I think we pick and choose which, which ones need the fast, or most, most attention, I guess, but no, it was a good, it was a good fair. I was at the grandstand event every night, my kids had to go, you know.
Just to add to your comment about the refrigerators, too, very, or Commissioner Nelson, is Elliot Lawrence, our four-H educator, had mentioned the possibility of looking into leasing refrigerators and stuff for the fair, and I don't know if that's a viable option or not, but it sounds like a great opportunity for us, because we only use those refrigerators and freezers for four days of the year. You know, to leave them unplugged probably does a more of a disservice than it does to have those newer, efficient refrigerators and stuff in there, so that is one opportunity they're looking into as an alternative for.
Well, that would make sense, to get rid of that one chest cooler outside, you know, out of the serving area, and put it a big one in the back, you know, behind the buildings, probably be a pretty good idea.
I thought it made sense, so hopefully that's a direction they'll explore further, and hopefully can come to be a solution for us.
I, I had, the best, the best deal at the fair was their free, free ice water at the four-H stand, so grab a cup and, it's ice water, at least when I was there, I kept filling it with ice and water, so. And there's one sink we can, we, you know, it's best water, so that's where we always got it. I was told. I do what I'm told, you know.
That's the secret, that's the one faucet they get the drinking water from.
Projects for your next year, so far, some of the big ones, bleachers in the grandstand area. If you guys have been to the grandstand event, some of the, especially on the south side there, some of those are kind of falling into disrepair, so we're trying to get those repaired, we're looking at either possibly buying a set of bleachers or two, and then repairing as, as needed. Horse barn roof is, uh, got several leaks in it, so we're looking at how, how are we gonna get those fixed, and what, what needs to be the best way to, way forward with that, so.
And the purlings are shot, so we had a couple of Fair Board members up on the roof before the fair fixing some holes that were up there, and they said it, it felt quite unstable, and that the purlings would be needing replacing, so that's kind of on the radar for bigger projects for the Fair Board for the year to come.
And then finally, you know, with the transit building and how that whole transfer process will happen, we need to get together with the the Transit Committee, and kind of discuss a plan moving forward on how to do that, we'd, you know, we'd like to be able to utilize that space, especially with four-H. The county four-H and Extension Office, be able to get in there as soon as possible, and how to best move forward with the plan, so like to hear your ideas on, on what we can do there, so.
But I think there's some ideas on how we could cross-utilize that space between the Fair Board and four-H, you know, something as simple as having clubs be able to have their club meetings held in there, on, you know, their monthly club meetings, or archery practice. There, the building is long enough, even with some remodeling, that they could have their archery practices in the back part of the building there, so we've been thinking of some different ideas and stuff, and would wouldn't mind the opportunity to meet with the Transit Committee if that's what it takes to, to further discuss how that might fit into a mutually beneficial situation.
You know, I think maybe what we should probably do is we should put all the players at the same table and have a joint meeting. Maybe one night, when you guys have Fair Board, we just, part of the, your agenda maybe, and we'll have to advertise it, that the full board can come out, and we have that discussion in that building, and, and bring Extension and, and four-H over there to see what pro, you know, and, and kind of maybe a little work session to say what the pros and cons, or maybe just the Fair Committee, too, it doesn't matter, but we need to kind of get on the same, we need to find direction, and I think now is the time. Before, we've been held up by some, some transition terms from the state for our purchase, but I think we're through those now, aren't we, Mary and Pat? Aren't we done with the?
No.
Oh, we will be.
There's one more.
We're getting there, and I think it, but the delay isn't on our part, it's, it's on the state.
Right, it's, but it'll go.
Goes back to the feds.
The feds have to sign off, yeah.
I do think it's a good idea to include Extension.
Well, they can tell us what the pros and cons in their end will be, and, or at least some of them, and, and we can say what the pros and cons of the other end, but I know there's some hesitation at that end, that there's some negatives that, in their minds that they'd see, so I think we just have to really look at the space and, and see what can be made, and, and I think, you know, as far as the county, I think you know, in my mind, ideally, I won't say, because then we'll, there will be speculation that that's the direction we're going, but I think there's opportunities to look at this and see what, there's many things to consider, not only, you know, it's building space for us, and what, what we can, you know, what we can do with it, and I know Transit wants to be rid of that, so they don't have to go and, you know, keep tabs on that all, you know, 'cause Kevin has to go down there weekly and make sure everything's running and, and working well, so we're in, we want to move forward on it, too, so I think that's a good start with the committee and, and report back to us, and, and if we want a joint meeting and to go forward, I think there's some decisions that have to be made, which, you know, what direction we go with on.
And I think we have an Extension meeting this, is it this month?
I did look at my calendar, I think, I think, I think there is one at the end of September, so.
Yeah, so.
We'll have, we can discuss some things there, and look at their current space compared to the new space, but there will be some cha, I mean, you'll have to do remodeling if, if there's something done, but.
Right, I would say the space is probably too small as it sits right now, as far as office space would go, you know, so that would have to be part of future plans, if that's the direction taken.
Yeah, and maybe more security lighting, or, I mean, there's lots, I mean, there's lots of things, so it's not just, not just, oh, let's do it, it's, it's things to consider, and then pros and cons, and make our decisions, so. And there's other things to consider, outside of that, the sheriff, you know, he's working on a impound area that we have joint, a shared space there, too, so it's, it's, it's a little bit more complicated on our end from, from some of those things considered, so.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, and the Rologe report next? No?
So we have a tran, we'll have a Transit meeting at the end of the month, and so I'll keep in contact with you guys and just.
Do you want us to attend?
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
We're just waiting for the.
Yeah, when we, if we can get the federal government to sign off, then yes, I would say, yeah. Until then, there's really.
Tell, tell we get that, we're in limbo, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds good. Well, you know, I just do want to say something, you know, your young gentleman here, Severn, did you, were you a presenter at Rologe? You were, you worked it, and did you present the miniatures? Come on, you're, if you, but he, he's an incredible young man with great talents, I just, I, he's in our four-H club, and you wouldn't believe the things that that young man can do, so keep up the good work, and thank you for coming today.
Can you maul on?
Yes, he can do anything. Let's jump up to Becky right now. Was she on the agenda?
I'm actually part of Sheriff, I'm just here.
Okay, that's what I thought. Sheriff Glander, can we? Let's just do your whole agenda, you're here, and then, and then, then you can. We're gonna jump around, because yours are just a couple purchases, so. If that's all right with the board?
Yep.
And Judy was here. Judy was at Finance and Courthouse to explain the, the cradle point.
So yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have a few items today. The first being the Verizon Cradle Point purchase. The total cost on that is fifty-three thousand two fifty-seven forty-two. We will be getting back twenty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine in credits, nine ninety-nine seventy-one. The county funding needed is twenty-four thousand two fifty-seven seventy-one. We have most of that in our budget, actually, we have all of that in our budget, squad car equipment and communication, so that will cover everything. We've had some issues with our current well, it's another company's version of Cradle Point, and its connectivity for our, our computers and our squads.
And Judy had worked with Cradle, has worked with Cradle Point in White Earth, and said that they have, it's a much better system.
It's a very, it's a real rock-solid solution.
So, and this would, and, so we basically would be updating our old ones to that system, but we're swi, just switching systems now, and going with a more reliable system, so.
So just one question, so you had it says in here that you'll, you need six ninety seventy-one, you don't need that, no?
That, that's all covered, we, that's all covered in our budget.
Okay, all right, got it, perfect.
Okay, entertain a motion, so we'll, motion by John, second by Richard. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and a squad vehicle.
Yeah, item number two is squad purchase request. We are breaking up our squad purchases between Chevy and Fords, just because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. In twenty-twenty-two, we purchase five squads, or we put in an order for five squads, we have still yet to receive those five squads, so we are.
And those were the Fords, correct?
They, they were the Fords, correct. So we're looking at getting three Chevys right now, Chevy Tahos, these are on state contract.
And Shep, this is the only vehicle Chevrolet has for Sheriff's vehicle.
That's correct. They have the Tahos and the pickups.
Right, but I mean, there's no smaller version.
Correct. There's a, the opening date of ordering is Wednesday, or, excuse me, the seventh, so.
What time?
Thursday. Not sure about the time, but.
Because they're, they might be short.
It can open and close very quickly, yes.
Could be closed in a few hours.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to go ahead with the purchase of the Tahoe squad car.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Erica. Any other discussion? And put the dollar amount in the motion, if you, if it's okay for the motion maker in seconds, or for number. All right, all those in favor signify. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, item number three is why Becky's here, we're looking at an event in our jail and just thinking about it scares me already.
Our old jail.
Our old jail.
Old jail.
The old jail, yeah.
Then the non-used.
So Becky.
Be interesting in the new one.
Either one scare me, so it's, yeah. Yeah, previously you did graciously approve letting us use the transit building for our haunted house. We've been in the 4H transit building, that was not on the list of of buildings that were highlighted, but it it does need some, there's some issues in that building as well that have been presenting some challenges for the haunted house. And honestly, we were hoping to move it into our own building this year, but of course, with DaVinci rolling in next week to set up, that's posed some problems. So going back kind of and talking a little bit, excuse me, the old jail came up and we've met with Sheriff and. One of his staff and walked through and think we could do a flow, we know there's some concerns with things that are in storage and off limit areas, so of course, we'll work really closely with that. Thinking of maybe some sort of alien theme for in that space. We do and have, when you do a haunted house, you're required to have an extra insurance policy, the risks are just too high once you're scaring people. So we would continue to carry that, we would condense it, usually we do two or three weekends on Friday and Saturday night. Sheriff prefers kind of doing one, one longer stint, so I think we decided on Thursday through Sunday that last week, technically before Halloween, but the last weekend in October. So just asking for your consideration.
Yep, and the Sheriff's Committee and Finance at the same time, we're we're fine with that, we we put that at the Sheriff's, Pat has looked at MCIT and notified them and and. Working, making sure everything's good with that, so. The security and will be left up and process will be left up to the Sheriff's Department Committee. But we were supportive.
Is Sheriff, are you going to be part of the?
He's the big alien.
I knew where you were headed. You know, there's areas that are off limits, we'll keep those off limits, and we will make sure that all areas are are checked. Becky's come up or will come up with some kind of a accounting. Take account of who goes in and who comes out and hopefully that adds up.
Yeah, we do already limit, you know, we started the haunted house during COVID, so there was all sorts of COVID restrictions that just lend themselves very nicely to a haunted house, like limiting the number of people in a group for one, for instance. So because I don't like to be scared, I am the one standing outside talking to people, going out of, going over the rules, kind of keeping track. And so we are already doing that on the front end, so we'll just have to add in a little extra accountability on the end. To make sure we have the same number of people coming back out as we had going in.
Having been up there, I think it'll be a very interesting place for a.
I think it's going to be really cool. I'm not sure I'll go and get scared.
We're going to give you a job.
All right, well, I think we just need a motion to to allow that and authorize the sheriff to coordinate it. So entertain a motion to allow the Historical Society to have the haunted house at the old jail with coordination through the Sheriff, Sheriff's Department.
Let me make that motion.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, I would like to do a thank, a big thank you to Becky. You know, Becky goes above and beyond what the call of her job description, I think she does it all over, you know, so. Thank you for for your work and and this is a community event that's really, really taken off and been a lot of kids. Some kids not so much, but a lot of kids. Place to have fun on Halloween, so not like the old days when we could go out and throw eggs, you know.
Lot of, lot of rules now.
Yeah. So we do feel that the the behavior will be probably better this year, being this at the Sheriff's Office. So probably less. So, all right, thank you, Becky.
Yeah, thanks, I have one question, Becky, on the DaVinci exhibit, since you're here, did you pick a time on the seventeenth to start?
So yeah, DaVinci will be rolling in as far from a setup standpoint, a week from yesterday, actually, just FYI. So next week we will be, or yeah, we'll be setting the exhibit up completely, we'll be doing a little bit of a donor sneak peek, which includes the county, so you'll be getting a card this week on the sixteenth in the evening. But the exhibit will open to the public on the seventeenth, which is Sunday at noon, so we are adding in Sunday hours from noon to four. Through the duration of DaVinci and then that'll be a good test to see if that's something that should continue past that exhibit.
Cool.
Okay.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
So go see the DaVinci exhibit.
Starting September seventeenth.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so we discussed this in Finance on Friday, the vacancy, that did not have to come to board, because I didn't know if that was for discussion or not.
No, if we got a vacancy, it just kind of goes through the channels.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I could ask you, what?
We were checking on the, he has a, Mary, did you, did you confirm in a call that there is a vacancy position that's not filled, correct?
Yes.
No.
No, this is not for deputy, this is the communications vacancy.
Well, the policy, if I may, Commissioner Nelson, the policy that the board approved allows for the department to move forward and not seek approval from the board if to fill a vacancy that's been budgeted for.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think you'd sent us an email, Mary and myself or whatever, and said, I just respond, go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure that we were good with that.
Yeah, I thought.
It's a replacement, so.
And then there was a question on claims about a toll.
Those bad boys.
Um, let's, well, let's, let's go into claims right now, if you're, if you're done.
Yeah.
Why don't we just have Mary, well. We're going to ask, well, there's a couple things in claims, I think, that we had a question, but go ahead with the bad boys towing one.
Okay, so this was a writ of execution and we've been reimbursed for that amount.
The whole amount, it was two vehicles, right?
Four, four units, two trailers and two vehicles.
Okay, it was like fourteen hundred and some dollars.
And we've been reimbursed for our portion of that.
Okay.
It was two, two trailers, two, two vehicles?
Two trailers.
Two vehicles.
And they had to tow them all together then, right?
That's, yeah, it was one, one incident that we were involved with.
It just seems like a, it looked, it was surprisingly large when you look at it, so. You know, and even, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not being gouged, even if it's a pass through, I just don't, I want it to be reasonable price. And if someone's gouging us through towing, they're not gouging maybe the county, but they're the people that I want to make it a reasonable, a fair price, not, I mean, they got to make money, but. So I tell people when I buy something, I don't, I want you to make money, just not all off of me, right?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
We are at, we consent, no, we did the consent agenda, correct? So we are at Commissioners, Reports and Correspondence.
All I have, this meeting is just our EDA and Housing Subcommittee and really the, at those, both those meetings, we've just continued to discuss the housing. You know, we have, we have the housing funding, how we're going to use it and. We haven't really come to any conclusions, we're going to start bringing people in to talk to us about what we can do in the Housing Subcommittee. In hopes of figuring out what we can do to use that money, that funding.
Okay, there's a, there's a group going around, I think a church-based group going around for for homelessness.
Yep, yep, I've been in contact with them too.
Okay, so we'll have to.
Yeah, and I know they are doing a lot.
Direct them through Housing EDA.
Yeah, yeah, they're doing a lot of. Data, you know, compiling data that would, I think, will be helpful. But I have talked to Karen Piper of just, you know, possibly working together and seeing what we can do. I think they're planning on presenting the data to the the group, I want to say it was in October.
You know, the group that I see, that I would like to help serve is the the youth that are that are homeless. And the working, the working class are homeless, I mean, the, I, I'm not the. But that's where I'm, and and the problem, the problem now is with the federal guidelines, the homelessness. Numbers are elevated because of the, how you identify.
Identify.
And it's, I mean, I'm, it's not, I don't know how you'd say, but I I think some of this homelessness is, they're not homeless, I mean, they are, they are choosing. Where to, where to go and and to stay, especially in the youth, I mean, so to classify someone as homeless is, for the whole year is is a stretch, I mean, it is a stretch. I mean, so when you see those numbers, they're huge numbers, you're like, oh, my gosh, it's not that bad, I mean, there is kids that need help.
Yep, yep, and I do.
But most of those numbers are not.
I do think that we in Becker County do have a homelessness problem, we don't see it as much.
Right.
But, but I think the overall bigger problem is just the lack of affordable housing, you know, I think.
Right.
I think in the EDA, we've talked that there is fifty people that have vouchers, housing vouchers that they can use. But they're not using them because they can't find housing, so I think that that's really the bigger issue that we want to.
Right, and that's, that's a clientele that I'm, you know, you want to help.
Yep.
It's, it's, I do have a problem with those that choose homelessness as a lifestyle and and you put them somewhere and they, then they just, I'd rather be, you know. You have to want to be stable too.
And I know this group has talked about, you know, the possibility of a homeless shelter and I don't know where where that is, but I know, you know, we've talked that maybe. The better look at resources is. More affordable housing, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
I had Soil and, Becker County Soil and Water and we have a new employee there, Colton, he's a shoreline specialist, he works, he's being. Cormant Watershed is the one that drove this because they don't have any, they had a part-time administrator who's got a full-time job, so she does not, she did not want duties or more duties and I think she's, will have less. Less duties with this person, so they're paying a big portion of the salary, I think Pelican Watershed is also paying part of the salary. So they're, but they're working, contracting through Soil and Water, so so Cormant doesn't have to have their own payroll. So that helps, they're. I don't know if there's anything else, a lot of, you know, they're just doing a lot of projects and doing, finishing up, there was a. There was an incident through highway about spraying in the county ditch. The individual, or the implement got hit, I don't know if you're aware of that, but maybe want to touch base with me after that, after the meeting and.
No, I wasn't brought up.
They never said nothing about it to me.
But that, I mean, it wasn't anything serious, but it was something that we should probably let you know and and you can find out more about. We had the Joint Powers Meeting out at Buck's Mills and and Nick gave a, we walked it and so it's an amazing, amazing project and it's a good. If you haven't been out there, there's a lot of property you can walk that's DNR aquatic management area, all the way out to that dam that they have out there, there's a. I mean, you have to cross the fence kind of, but it's public, you can just walk it, it's there, and he said, this is, it's fine to walk out there, but it's a nice trail, it, you're above the little channel and. I'd recommend people, it's an area, that's a gem of an area, now, DNR won't allow that gate to be open probably, but maybe we can have a walking gate to let people walk in there more, but. It's a, it's a two-track, so you can walk on a track, you're not in long grass, but it's a nice, nice area out there. Very poorly attended, unfortunately, so. Anyone else have, I got a couple more, but anyone want to jump in?
Go ahead.
I had a highway with John. And we got our safety inspection on our new building, just a couple minor things there.
Went pretty well.
Yeah.
A lot of it had to do with just new move in and then the complete.
And then environmental, and we're talking about. Raising fees, we haven't decided how we're going to do it, but. Things, everything's going up, it's hard to get rid of garbage now, so.
So we're trying to get a joint meeting with Clay County City Moorhead here, probably later. Probably next week if it works out. To get together and see how if we can do some backhauling and transfer trade garbage, some that goes to bargain and reduce our hauling.
But I walked around with Jim a while and just super, I mean, super intelligent about the the whole process, so I really impressed it with him and. Shout out to both, both for coming and viewing it, so.
Well, that's going to be the future because we can't get rid of it. And so, of course, the economy's got to be good to recycle too, because when we go to sell that recycled product, we can't, yeah, so it's a, it's not just as easy as it sounds.
I can't remember the name, the the young lady that has the, the, working with.
Futures?
Yeah, green, do you remember her name?
Best Futures?
Better Futures.
She was out there and was showing, showing how she breaks down the mattresses and puts them all containerized and so shout out to you. Thank you for helping Becker County get to that level and and then we have some metals we can, you know, because they are a nightmare for landfills because they don't compact them, so.
Back on highway, just a couple other things. In our equipment budget there, there's the line item, forget what it was for, but. Looking at a snow pusher blade, now that we've got a lot more parking lots, probably a twelve, fourteen foot one like we have on transfer station. With trip edges on it, where to speed up the process of cleaning the parking lots and then. Possibly helping out at the jail quite a bit too.
If they.
We got the manpower, so.
Yeah, and that that is needed when you're in a big parking lot like that, that's whatever you, all the.
Versus a bucket.
General contractors are using them.
Is that in place of the one we have or added addition?
It's just a, they.
We don't have a.
No, we don't have one, you just take the.
I was thinking on the pickup.
It's a quick attach.
To a front end loader, bigger front end loader, twelve to fourteen feet wide.
Is it, is that, I mean, I, just a question for your committee, is that better than a second pickup one, you know, pickup one is so much more.
Yeah, it's a big area, you can push a lot in a hurry, and if you look at like any of the professionals like Felts or any of these guys who do Foltzes or any of these big parking lots.
Well, then I think it, if we want to go that road, I think it almost should be a requirement to to do the jail one then too. I mean, seriously, if you're that close and you're and we're.
I had that discussion.
Yeah, they just want to make sure that this is their first year, that everything, everything's going to go. I'm not saying whatever it takes to get it, but we we need it.
That comes up here, probably won't be, probably at the next meeting, the purchase, you get it on order, probably wouldn't pay a board on it till next year, but that's all.
Right, and they were going to get one next year anyway.
I know another parking lot they could do too.
Just a little loop around? Well, they've done my driveway now for. Just kidding, just kidding.
Another thing that was brought up, we're looking at is fuel increase for outside agencies that buy fuel through us, uh, non-county. So it'd be like the post fire, police, or anybody else that fuels out there.
Just try and help.
$400,000 system and it's always been left up for some goals, county has to do the full torque.
Is it a, do you, did you have a fee per gallon or is it per, I mean, so then the fee has not changed in a long time? I mean, if it was associated with, it was tied to the dollar amount per gallon, then it would have increased, but.
I don't recall what Jonas said it was.
Well, that, what, we're talking five cents or something.
Yeah.
Not big, but just that, that's a nice, that's a really nice service out there.
They're going to look into the usage of other departments and just see how that affects them. What are we having on highway and environmental?
Um, John and I had sheriffs. We had a few things around the agenda. Let's see, the only things that, well, there's some things in, on budget that we, I won't get into. I think the only thing is we discussed the, the purchase, what he wants to, what he would like to purchase on his, with that, on that money, that one-time money of 996,000. Um, so we have some discussion items there and one of the things that, you know, that's, that's on the list is radios and that's, that's for all rescue and fire and, and also so.
Melvett's County one.
Yeah, and I think there would be, you know, maybe those, you know, we don't have enough money for everything, so if, if those non-county, you know, one possibility is maybe they have, we pay a share of it or something, but, um, anyway, that's one of the things. And Pat, did you ever get an answer yet on the, whether that $200,000 is, we have additional 200 or we haven't heard back yet?
No, no, and just to follow up what Commissioner Nelson is saying is every year we get 200,000 in public safety aid and, uh, but as Commissioner Nelson said, 996 is this special legislative aid, so we've been asking, is it 200 plus 996 or is, is the 200 in the 996? And so the answer is no, we've made the inquiry and haven't got a response yet.
Um, we had land, uh, natural resource meeting, um, we had the Buck's Mills update and, um, again, that's moving forward. I don't know what, when we'll, I think the fencing is done or start, will start, it's, fencing will be in this fall is what, the old quote was still good, so we're moving forward. Um, we are asking the public or the D N R to either pay or help with some of their , um, boat launch just now, beings their, their, yeah, they've got more money this year, they've always said they haven't had money, so they've got an influx of money, so we think they should be helping pay for their garbage and, and, um, upkeep of the Heartland or of the trails and then we're going to ask them also on garbage on the Heartland Trail because we manage that quite a bit. Um, we went through the utilities cost for the highway department building or the public works building, um, otherwise, looking for a forest intern and, um, we had, we have a forest intern and he was, he's going to be done and he, he gave a report and it was really good. He, hopefully he comes back to, he's got two years of school left and we can retain him and he said, I'd like to come back to Becker's. Um, the other, only other thing is we discussed some forest road maintenance. I think he's going to put some money in the budget for some maintenance for next year. Um, quick, quick note, we had, um, I had the Lakeland Mental Health, we met down in Alexandria, so it was a, good to see, good to see that facility. Um, our psychiatry is really taking a hit, um, when we changed over some, to, to, to new, to new people and that's mostly remotely, um, that takes well for them to build that caseload back up, but we're still in the, we still are positive by 5.6%, I think it is, between five and six percent positive cash before the year. So they're, they're pretty close to where budget should be, but that psychiatry, you know, last year we had it in a real positive, so now we're trying to build that back. Anyone else?
I, I had, uh, D A C. Um, so they hired a new program director, um, I, for the life of me, I can't remember her name right now, just blew my mind. She got hired approximately a month ago and she's apparently, she's doing a very good job. Uh, the executive director, Marlene Smith, said she's doing a great job, so that's awesome to hear. And then also, uh, we taught, we, we, we've been inviting every, every meeting, we're going to try to invite employees in to tell us what they do and how they, they do things. So one of the employees that came in yesterday, or not yesterday, the last meeting was, uh, the lady that is in charge of placing people into the community to work from the D A C. And so they, she's placed seven new people and they're doing really well. There's two at Taco John's, two at S J Urambus and there's one at Breezy Shores and then there's two at Sinclair Gas Station. So, and what, what they do is they send a, an employee, a employee of the D A C with them to these places when they go to work and they work usually like four hours. They start at like 10 and work from 10 to 12 or something like that. And it, it actually, it's working out really well and something, it's, it's a, they aren't able to do as many as they want to all the time because they don't have enough people maybe to go with them, but once they get going and they're there, they don't necessarily have to stay the entire time, then they can go with another client to another place and so, but it's working out really well, so. That, that was cool. And then they got two new vans, um, they're not brand new, but one of them is super awesome. It's nice. It's like a Cadillac van that they got from someplace in, I don't know, I think it was Tennessee or something. Um, so, because they, the, the two old vans they had were, actually they got rid of three old vans, they were really bad and they, like they, they, they sold them, I believe, but I think they pretty much got rid of them because.
Was it a new van, new ones they bought or?
They, they were used, but they were, they were.
Newer used.
Newer used, yeah, yeah, they were nice. And then Becky was just here with, from, we had a historical society meeting, so I just wanted to, everything she talked about was, well, I was going to talk about, so I just wanted to remind about the Da Vinci, uh, exhibit starts September 17th and, and Sunday at, at noon, so I don't know if anybody else is excited, but I'm excited. And then John and I had, didn't have a transit meeting, but we had, got an update from Kevin and the rider ships for August are up 6.23% and he's up over eight percent for the year, so that's good. Um, his budget is really good, he's way under budget. Um, he's at 55% of his budget with 67% of the year gone, so.
Expenses or revenue?
Expenses.
Where's revenue?
Uh, I, you know, I don't even know. He didn't send that to us.
Okay, well, if revenue's not there, then it doesn't help you.
Well, his budget is, is funded by the state, mo, most of his budget, almost all of his budget, yeah. Uh, actually, was it the federal government?
Well, it's fed, fed money and state money.
And state money combined, yeah. Yeah. Um, the transit building, like we talked before, they're just waiting on the paperwork to be signed by the federal government for the disposal of the building. And of course, like anything else that's ordered, he's ordered, we've ordered, he's ordered two buses and he's had to redo some orders and all they're missing, all they're getting all, some of the parts, some of the vendors are way behind on parts, so we, we may never get a new transit bus. Who knows?
They'll, they'll be teleporting by the time.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll be, uh, is there anything else on transit? I don't.
No.
Did you have notes for courthouse?
I, I, I put, everything's on, that we're talking about is.
Did you have any notes for courthouse that?
We're correcting the budget?
No, no, I just, just anything, I can't remember. I don't have my notes for courthouse.
I, I.
Budgets are sort of white noise.
Let me, let me just take a quick look on the, I thought everything was on the agenda, but let me take a.
The only other, um, thing that we should probably discuss under commissioners, reports we done?
I got a couple of ones that. With Pelican River Watershed and we're kind of meeting with staff there, Pat is, to see where we're probably overlapping in, in some, so we're not duplicating our duties out there and permitting and so forth and, uh, that'll be kind of a work in progress as we move forward. Airport, uh, construction should be starting out there, it says today, but I'm not sure with the weather and stuff, if they're going to tear anything up, albeit the parking lot and it started on a fuel system, excuse me. And all the airport commissioners, we had to sit through a training for swept stormwater training, mandatory by Mendat, so.
What was that, sorry?
Or that swept stormwater training, that what Mendat requires that the commission or the board goes through. It wasn't that long, probably $20,000. We had Prairie Lakes, Minnesota Solid Waste and this cost and Steve will probably get on a little bit more. Our tipping fee down there is going up from 138 to 145 a ton. And they're going to have to, we're going to have to add more to the five-year capital plan, almost double it because the facility's getting older and needs more upgrades and it'll be down probably for about a month for upgrades, repairs, but they'll still be able to get beyond schedule and still burn their 55,000 ton of garbage this year, so. Other than that, things are going pretty well in the way. We did approve, uh, the engineering firm, Stanak, to study the waste ash issues and come back with some recommendations, like right now all the ash is going to landfill there, Eastern New York Mills, that Otter Tail County owns and it's even been thrown out a while, probably the Prairie Lakes should be holding that landfill instead of paying Otter Tail, so they can manage it a little differently. The end goal is probably to reuse that ash, clean it up, put it in road, road beds, so forthlike that, instead of burying it all.
Well, yeah, because there's that other county that were there, they've used, they've gone and dug it all out and used it up already, so I mean, it.
Well, down, down at the one we viewed down there by Hoffman, they're re-mining that so to speak and going through and cleaning it up and surprising all the different metals they take out of it, that they sell, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of a cost neutral type thing also. They're working on that and all the other stuff we covered, so, so I'll help.
Okay, um, we should, uh, the thing that reminded me, we should probably touch base with Lisa Will on, on training for commissioners, um, for board of equalization, because I think I'm the only one, isn't it?
Someone else got some.
I.
I haven't yet.
Is it the adjustment, or are you talking about, about the?
But I think.
Is that the same as the?
It's just that, that's a quick one on, on the computer, it only takes about half.
No, is that the same, do we have that meeting earlier this year?
Yeah, where they came in and yelled at Barry? Yeah.
Well, that doesn't narrow it down.
Had a lot of them.
No, the, the, was, uh, we, we talked about their adjusting their properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, I filled that out, I.
Did you take the online?
I took the online test, but I won't be good till next year.
Okay.
Okay, well, we won't have it till next year, will we?
Nope.
So you could be yelled at instead.
I don't, I'll be yelled at, I'm sure, many times before that too. Got you by my side. Um, let's talk about A M C, um, the December one, is anyone planning, I'm planning on going December.
I'm planning.
If you plan on going, so we better book, book some rooms and registration, so I am and, and if anyone wants to touch, you can touch base individually, but I, you can.
I plan to.
I plan to.
I'm putting an email out this week and just get your account and we'll, we'll get it to schedule.
And then look, the, the September meeting, um, we should probably send out a letter too and ask if anyone's going to the, um, policy.
That's not what I would.
Yeah, and if we need a room or, or, um, registration. And if we don't, if you don't register as we, and you just go down for the day, you can do that too and just, they'll bill us for it, so, and that's acceptable too. So, um, I'll touch base with you because I have an M R C meeting that one, the night before, so I'll probably go down and then stay that night and, and, so. Anything else in the reports correspondence? Um, appointments for the RAC committee, when is the next RAC meeting?
It's the second Tuesday, 12th. Let me see here.
And we have a few individuals interested in that already, is that?
It's the 12th, it'd be the 12th at one o'clock, I think. Yeah, we have two in.
Sure, two, um, Howard Mooney, which is a great forester, and then we've got Howard Glunder, um, he's been active in trails and A T V and snowmobiles.
Yep.
And, you know, we do have foresters on staff already on the committee.
Mm-hmm.
And that's saying Howard wouldn't be a great one.
Yeah.
But I think for a good cross-section of people, nice to have somebody from others.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Probably they're both from my district.
And, and I was going to ask you that, or what, what district are they from?
Howard, you have a real nice presentation on the, you know, on the Highway 34 that, um, what, that he just was here and spoke on that, if you remember Howard.
He was at our last.
He was at our last meeting.
Well, I, that's the question I had too, what, I like a diverse board, I like people from both sides of topics, so I don't know, um, I guess, I don't know if we're leaning one way or the other on.
Well, back when Howard attended, I think he was the only one, as mentioned.
Which Howard?
Howard Mooney.
Mooney.
Yeah, when he attended.
He, well, he attended the.
He came to the meeting just to show.
He was interested at that time, we said, well, we got the advertisement out, and somebody did mention Glunder.
Mm-hmm.
And then since that, we got a little resume problem and, uh, he's kind of from the other side of the spectrum and which is probably not, so.
What, what, we, we have one person that hasn't been attending, what district are they from, do you remember?
Well, my district just got appointed.
Yeah, we were, there's another, yeah, yours got appointed, but there was another.
Well, Karen, she attended.
Oh, Paige, was it Paige?
Paige Perry.
Paige Perry, is she not attending or, isn't there somebody that hasn't been, hasn't attended one yet? God, I can't remember.
Is there a, is there a, do we, are we looking at nominating a person, a person today for that large position?
So we get.
I, I would agree, I think it's good to have a diverse board.
Mm-hmm.
So I think.
Well, the foresters that we have are not board members, they're employees, correct?
They're employees, but they still give you a good direction.
Maybe that.
Yeah. I mean, I.
I think just knowing Howard Mooney and, and reading the resume and the other, I mean, they're both, it'd be nice to put them both on there. If you have two people interested, it'd be nice to have.
Like Dave said, we got one that's not coming and.
Yeah.
Who's the?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what district.
You know, do you know who your other?
Well, I think that's, that's a separate issue of the person, I think we have, don't we have a policy now about missing meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, Hank is in your district.
You're not being.
I, I remember.
That we can.
Mitch was going to reach out to her, I think. Mitch was going to talk, reach out and see, he had, he had reached out to her, knowing no response.
I wonder, I wonder if it would be Richard's district?
I don't know.
Just by, I'm assuming Phil is your district.
Phil is.
Phil is, yes.
How many do we have per district?
We have one.
It's not by district.
Oh, it's not by district?
No.
Oh.
Well, it's, 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 the appointments that commissioners make are, don't have to be their district.
Gotcha.
They make an, you know, it's kind of a district five appointment, but it can be.
There's, there's one for each district and two at large. Well, they're, that's the idea. I mean, do, do we?
Paige Perry is district two.
Okay, so that's my district.
Yeah, she, they haven't been there.
No, no, she hasn't been there.
Oh.
So, well, that's, that's a little bit separate issue.
Yeah, no, I was just saying if that person was in.
And you're just getting rolling, so it's.
No.
But none of these two people live in that, that's what's my question.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with, if someone has a, if someone wants to make a motion for an appointment or it will, will, if it's not, it will move on to our next agenda.
Do we want to talk to the RAC committee and see what they think or I don't know?
No, it's a part of the board.
Which makes, I.
We don't want to, we don't want the tail wagging the dog.
No, we don't, I agree.
I'd make a motion to appoint Howard Glunder.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Just for diversity on the.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to second to appoint Howard Glunder?
Glunder.
Glunder, is it, sorry.
Glunder.
Glunder, blunder, not glunder.
I don't appreciate you making fun of me and criticizing.
Glunder.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Perfect.
You're lucky we're such good friends or we wouldn't, we wouldn't get along.
Yeah, hoping we could share a room and.
No, no, I don't want to, I don't want to go that far. Okay, where are we? We are at county administrator. Pat?
Yes, Commissioner, um, just to give you an update, Kyle Verber, the planning and zoning director, did respond back to me, he's comfortable if those items get moved till September nineteenth. He'll let the individuals that may have shown up know about that, so they don't make a trip for nothing, so just wanted to confirm that with you. Community-based copy, it's a plan, Commissioner Nelson was able to sign that contract, we're looking to a kickoff in September, I did ask Bolton Mink, again, the, the company that was selected, who would you like to have that kickoff, and she indicated normally it's staff, but, but I asked if I could let the board know, because I thought maybe some commissioners might be interested in attending, and she said that's not atypical, but usually it's staff, so I'm putting that out there, we don't have a date set up, but we'll just send to communication out to all five of you. If someone wants to sit in on the kickoff, then we'll, it is scheduled sometime in September.
Just with that comp, the study, um, I've had, I've had some, a call and some conversations about it, it's a lot of money for, for what? So, I have high expectations or, or for this and for our ordinances to be completed, because and I think we, I stated this before, this is a lot of money and by, and we have taxpayers that think that this is a waste of money. And to some degree, I kind of agree with them, especially on that comp book that sits up there, but, um, so I have high expectations of this being, having to be utilized in that, in planning and zoning ongoing, so. I'm just, I'm just saying that there's been reservations about moving forward with this and I'm, and I'm agree with that, so. Anyway, I just had to say that and I wanted that person's opinion to be heard and it's a lot of money for, for, if we're not gonna be utilizing this for a book on the shelf. So, this one better be implemented and be used on a daily basis. My two cents, thank you, Pat.
No, you're, you're welcome. Bargaining negotiations, so we are tentatively scheduling those for end of September, our goal would be to bring those to a conclusion before the end of the year. That's something we, Becker County hasn't been able to do, but there's been reasons for that, because we've been doing a lot of annual contracts, so we're very much looking forward to bargaining with our, our unions here and beginning that towards the end of September. Safe asure was talked about, their inspections in the buildings, they did inspections on all our buildings. They were favorable, and any corrections that needed to be made are, they're working through facilities and our department heads to make sure that those are incorporated. We also met with Nick Lindberg, he's actually our MCIT safety person, we, we wanted just to get a temperature and our own safety committee and how we do things, and so we got some good feedback from him and some information on, on how we can expand the safety committee and what we're doing, we meet normally on a quarterly basis, our next meeting here is in September. We have a safety event that I mentioned at the last board meeting, that both myself and, and Amanda Pock will be going to in Bemidji. That's a one-day event specifically on regional safety in the northwestern part of Minnesota, so that's really my update.
Is Amanda on the safety committee?
She is, yes, she has some safety responsibilities as part of her job description, and she attends the safety committee, not as a member, but as, just to keep notes and minutes and things like that. We have a member from each department, each building, that's on the safety committee. So I'll move to budget, unless there are any other questions? Budget, if I could ask you just to go to page twenty. Twenty-two, thank you, Commissioner Meyer, that's just our budget timeline, I just wanted the board to appreciate where we're at right now, of course, we started back in June of twenty twenty-three. Of course, we went through a lot of work with the board and doing legislative updates and surveys and quite a bit of benchmarking, getting a lot of feedback from other counties, there's very much an interest in what counties are asking us and we're asking them on, on where they're sitting with their budget and what their potential levy would be. We spent approximately a month with department heads in completing their preliminary budgets, and that was a series of one-on-one meetings. We are now at the point where we're doing department and committee review over the last month, and of course, we had a lot of committees here at the end of this last week. Both courthouse and finance because of the Labor Day holiday, and then, of course, we had sheriff and environmental committees as well, that met at the end of the week. And the highway committee as well, and what we're at right now is, um, we, we've got another two weeks before we set the preliminary levy, so this week and next week, it will be very important to solidify where our budget's at and where our increases are at and get a final review with our courthouse committee and finance committee on where we're at, and so that's kind of just the timeline. What I'd like to do is, I want to hand out to you, and Nicole, if you could come up, because up to the table here too. Nicole, of course, as you know, is our finances room manager and she plays a very important role in the, in the budget process, and I want to make sure, if I'm missing something, then she's really good about correcting me, what I'm handing out is our summary of kind of where things are sitting, just a bullet point, standpoint on the budget. And then after our finance committee, we had some direction as well, so two sheets of paper, just pass it on, and you're gonna get another two sheets and, and we'll make sure we have stuff for staff and also for the public. And of course, with our Labor Day holiday being what it was, yeah, our Labor Day holiday being what it was, normally it'd be nice to have a Monday to be able to update and correct things, but right now where we're sitting at from just a levy standpoint, and again, this is the preliminary levy, we're around between five and six percent, and that's, that's a pretty normal spot to be in, our goal, I will tell you as staff, and I think as the, as the county is probably to get around four point nine percent is where we'd like to get, and we have another couple of weeks to set that preliminary maximum levy, but just remind you, we have another three months to do much more due diligence and have a public hearing and certify the budget. So really, this is sort of the end of the beginning on this, and, um, do you have both of these in front of you as well?
I'm short one copy.
Well, then let's give her that, and.
Thank you.
And so I'm just gonna start and just go by fund by fund, obviously, one of the big things that's not a surprise is the increase for wages countywide, that is a typical thing that every county is experiencing, and we're doing our best to budget for that. Benefits as well, if you recall, last year we had a, we planned on a six percent increase in insurance, we actually had a five percent increase, and we're, we're seeing some very favorable numbers in our utilization rates. And so our, I think our, our goal here is to, as we go through the benefits committee and work with our broker and see what the responses are in RFP, we hope and expect that we'll, we'll have a much favorable review of benefits as well, but we are budgeting three percent for an increase, and, but again, we hope we're pleasantly surprised. General fund, these are just the bullet point numbers to review with you, and this is a double-sided paper, is, um, one of the big changes we made based on benchmarking is we found that most counties, in fact, we couldn't find a county that does it differently, but we always, they all move their MCIT dividend and their liability in one fund, as opposed to moving it from budget to budget. So we've moved those, that liability line out and it's in each departmental budget, we moved, did the press not get one, I'm so sorry, so. Give that to, no, no, she threw it in that, sorry, Commissioner, that just didn't get over to them, excuse me, sorry about that. We'll make sure you get those, yep, yep. So continuing on the, the, um, so we've moved those together under one general fund along with the dividend, which is also in a general fund. Our dividend is much less than it was in the previous year. That's been encountered as we reach out to MCIT by every county, the dividend has decreased. We do see increases in, in IT services as well.
Just one thing.
Yes, sir.
So the MCIT dividend, they, I mean, obviously, they recommend not putting that in your budget because it's not a guaranteed revenue. We, I think we've done that for many, many years, but we want to gauge that, you would like to gauge that conservatively and not, not overestimate what you're gonna get from MCIT, but just, just, you know, they recommend, you shouldn't be including this in your revenue, but I think most people do.
Most counties do, yeah, yeah. So again, IT and obviously increases in equipment and, and software, that's been an important investment. We are proposing in the budget currently for a full-time assistant county attorney, this was proposed by the assistant attorney last year, didn't get into the budget, it's being requested again. Our county program aid, so out of that two point three million we received and, and legislative funding, the only thing we've put into the budget so far is the county program aid, it's always in our budget, and that's increased to four hundred thousand, but the other monies have not been put into the budget to date. But the county program is in there because it's been in there in previous years. From a public safety standpoint, we're proposing a lieutenant position based on benchmarking, that's a very standard position, that's in the sheriff office for this size county is having a lieutenant. The state grants are down by about.
One thing to note down the lieutenant position too is, you know, we're gonna have all these, these discussions next week, but, um, we are spending some overtime dollars on, that we would be, there would be some savings that we're spending overtime, and, and to be honest, see, I think if you, we have to make sure we're, we're, we're getting a lot of, the person that's, that's gonna benefit most is going to, is putting in a lot of hours that aren't even putting in for overtime, we, we are, we certainly have, and as you know, there's more paperwork, and I think the sheriffs, they have a valid argument that this is, we've been getting by with one. We used to have two under sheriffs or two, two lieutenants and that, I mean, it's, anyway, I mean, don't mean to digress, but a little more detail on that, that why, why we feel it's, it's probably necessary to move forward with that, but more discussion next week.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. Increases in expenses for professional medical support, as you recall, we went from a different contract, we had mend and we went to SACH. And that has been an increase in our costs, just backside of the page, increasing repairs and maintenance for building and rental service agreements, accurate IT contract is, has resulted in an increase, jail, increase in custodial supplies, food and beverage, medical supplies. Highway, increase in construction expense, easements have been down about a hundred sixty thousand, increase in repairs and maintenance for roads, increase in road maintenance supplies, and then increase in shop supplies, gas, oil, and equipment has been a standard increase. Recreation, um, increasing.
Just, just go back to the, the increase in construction expense, I mean, there's more construct, I mean, highway, you gotta remember, highway is based on what they get done a year and that fluctuates so much, so that's not just a, that's not just a negative, that's, that's.
State aid.
Yes, that's projects on the ground.
Mostly that's not levied either.
Right, that's not levy increase, that, that's a big dollar amount, so I don't want, I don't want anyone reporting that we're increasing the levy two million dollars by on highway, because that's not the case, that's just, those projects are coming through.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson, recreation, again, increase in ground maintenance parks, recreation board expense, repairs, resource development, again, increase in contractor services, and then decrease in state, state grants are kind of the big items that we wanted to make the board known. If you look at the second sheet, it's really just some things, if you recall, we had our finance committee on Friday, and we had some additional questions that got brought up by the finance committee. VCO position, as you know, we are, our VCO is, is going out on duty, and so we are looking to bring in a temp, we've made an, an offer for that position, I believe they've accepted it, but we're gonna kind of save that name for a couple of weeks, just to make sure everything is, is set, but we had to move and change the money situation because of our, our CDSO that's gonna be going out on service will not be funded, but our temporary position will be, so. And so we had to understand, are the benefits gonna change or not, and of course, in this case, the benefits more likely will be removed, that should lower costs for us. Again, adding the assistant county attorney, it was brought up by the finance committee, was, well, let's look at what that cost is, is we started January one, if we started July first, what's the difference in cost, and so we have that there. Federal prisoner revenue, that's obviously something that the county has received around about five hundred thousand a year traditionally, but what affects it is making sure we have a full complement of jail personnel there, we don't have the jail personnel there, we can only board so many federal prisoners, so we brought that down slightly to four hundred thousand, and again, we're gonna look at that, revisit that. We have a deputy vacant position that was already budgeted in the budget and previous year budget, so we are looking to fill that. And one of the bigger reasons is to help offset the services that are being limited in the tribal areas with some of the tribal police force, their number's going down. But there will be no increase in that budget because that position was already there, and then finally, a variable position on temporary positions in the Otter Treasure Office, so we wanted the board just to kind of see what the big bullet items were, and where we're really looking at right now, like I said, in our levy, it's, it's between five and six percent, but we're gonna know a lot more when we bring the full budget to you in two weeks, when we review it again, with a few department ads, through courthouse one more time, through finance one more time, and then back to the board, where you'll set the preliminary levy, the preliminary maximum levy.
I don't think it'll go back through courthouse.
Well, well, there may be some items, yeah, that we might break through you, but not necessarily having to prove the preliminary maximum levy.
But we're looking for too is the, the increased revenue that's ongoing, I mean, is, if, if we can get that number, that will tell us how much that will bring, you know, because there was a lot of state funding, you know, that we should be able to bring that, it, it's between five and six as it, as it's presented, depending upon how you want to include.
Yeah, and if I could add to what Commissioner Nelson's saying, because maybe I missed out saying is, the only thing we've incorporated from that two point three million is the county program aid. And I would also make sure the, the board knows that there's still about two million of unrestricted special general fund that's available, and our goal here, of course, is not to pay for something and bring a levy down and have to pay for it later, but there could be some identified capital investments that are levy-driven that we could use those funds for.
And we have to remember, we are paying for, the reason why we have this high increase is because of the increase in salaries last year, we, we gave more than what we had, significantly more than what we had budgeted for last year and negotiations. The other point, though, the other good news, Mary and Nicole can chime in, we had the, the audit review at finance, and very, very good, had nothing but compliments for the staff. But we have, we are doing very well financially in our current budget also. That, and if, and I think you can see in our proposed budget, human services has a zero percent increase, is that correct?
It is, yes.
And that, and we are seeing that they're way under budget this year, I mean, way under budget, so. Denise, I don't, I, I don't know what exactly is going on there, but Denise is holding the line on zero percent and, and maybe, you know, if we're that, I don't know where the expense is, why we're, why we have such a balance there this year, but maybe we look to, maybe there's even more to cut, now she would be, and she's done well on her cutting before, if, if things, if more revenues coming in, we can reduce county levy, but that will be something that we'll ask her, and these new positions that are in here, we put them in the budget, now the people are going to have to argue it for, at the board meeting, so you will get all the information and the attorney will give you his reasoning why and show you, and the sheriff and, and Mary will, they'll show, give the explanations to the full board, and then we'll make that decision at that time whether they, we feel that they, and, and a big part of that too is where we are in the budget, I mean, how, if we're at a eight percent, we're, there's probably not gonna be any, but obviously, we're not, we're, we're looking, and I said I want to be in the fours max, and we'll go from there, see what, see, but we are, we are building on our reserve this year, the way it looks like we're gonna finish the year, we'll build on that, so. I do not like spending ongoing, I, I don't like positions or ongoing to spend with reserve or one-time money, I think that is, Mary has some suggestions, as you see in here, or we said, next year's election, she's, she's requesting some temporary help on that for next year, I think we can see what the writing on the wall, what the election is going to be like in twenty twenty-four, so we want to make sure we're a full staff and more than adequate here to handle any absentee counting and, and monitoring, so she's preparing for a, you know, a, a very high turnout and, and difficult election. So, but some of those, it was, we thought that's not an ongoing, hopefully the election cycles calm down after this, and, and that would be out of one-time money, that was something. So, any other questions, but it'll be a good discussion area item, we, I think the committees have went through line by line on most of their items, so it's been a very, I think it's been a good process, thank you, Nicole and Mary for, um, doing that, and again, the audit came back really well, I did ask that the audit be presented to the full board next year, I think we used to have that, and I don't know why, where, but I think Clifton, I mean, they haven't done, I think with COVID, I think they all, just everyone pulled back and is doing, doing less, but the audit will be, as requested, a full board, and, instead of just the finance committee, anything to add to that?
Nope, that would be it.
Okay, anything next?
No, that, that finishes me, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary.
Good morning, okay, so I'm not exactly sure, do you want me to present claims?
Well, yes, if there's a couple, we had Sheriff Glander answered the towing one, does anyone have, we'll just go through claims right now, anyone have any? Does anyone have, we'll just go through claims right now. Anyone have any questions on claims? I had, I thought I had a couple. That one was the towing. Oh, I asked John, his acronym.
My abbreviations.
John had an acronym on a, on a meeting, N E G R O, or no, N E G. Oh, like, what is that acronym for? Negotiations. I'm like, oh, I didn't catch that one. All right.
Well, and just-
He told me to use that.
So we don't process the claims until Wednesday? So I mean, if you do go or come across something that you want pulled, nothing gets mailed until Friday?
Okay. I, no, I'm just talking about-
Specific question?
Just a question. I just, beings it wasn't, beings we didn't have it at finance, usually we go through claims in finance. So I just wanted an opportunity for anyone to, and we had a couple of questions. I got answered, I think. I can't find anything. Well, is that the, anyone have any questions on claims? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve claims.
We'll do approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica to approve the claims over 90 days and auditor's warrants, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And human services claims. Motion, entertain a motion to approve human services claims. Have no questions?
I'll make a motion to approve human services claims.
Human services, public health, and transit.
Yep.
Yep. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Yeah, these, we've had a lot of them this year, these Monday, Monday holidays. And these Friday finance meetings have been difficult this year. We have not, we're, we're a tish slow on getting information out. Our department has our tish slow to getting that into Peggy, and we're a tish slow getting it to the board. And so I would ask that we make an effort to try to get, department heads, try to get that information in a little earlier, so we can get that out Thursdays rather than Friday afternoon. So, okay. License list.
Okay. We do not have any licenses for today's meeting. So I'm gonna go right to the June cash comparison, sales tax, and investment summary. Requesting a motion to accept.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dave to accept the cash comparison, sales tax, and investment summaries. There a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pat, did we look into resolutions? We had two resolutions on consent. It's, are we okay to send those through on consent agenda?
You are, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Because here's another one, the resolution 1C, repurchase parcel number. This is a standard, when they come in, there's, it's just gotta be documented. We don't have a, I mean, we don't have, we can't say no. And so entertain a motion to approve resolution 1C, repurchase parcel number 320259004. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Carrie? Had a review and a clarification for us. Two things, right?
Yes. So the first item I have is with regards to the class and comp study. I've spoken to a few of you here, and what, we're on the final leg of it. Information went out on Friday to the bargaining units, and we are finalizing and just making some final tweaks to questions that have come up, positions, et cetera. So what I would ask the board to do is for a motion to go forth with implementation of the comp and salary study as written, with some understanding that there might be some final tweaks in there as well.
I don't know that we've all, I haven't seen a copy of it.
It, was it not in your board packet?
No.
No.
Can you, let's, let's see. Can we take Brent, and then we'll go on break, and you can get copies, Sarah?
Sure. And the copies really-
Come on right after the break.
Sure, I can. I apologize, I was at a funeral on Friday, so I didn't see. But with that said, just so you know, that really the copy of it is really the presentation and a memo. And then there was a list of positions as well, of where things were graded. So I could certainly get you a copy. Does everyone want a copy of everything?
Yeah, I get a couple for the press, too, please. So Brent, we'll take you, and then we'll go on a short break. And you have the fill and flush.
Yes.
It's actually a flush and fill, but I think it should be fill first, then flush.
Well, good morning. Looking for approval to do a facility improvement measure, as Commissioner Nelson has said, flush, fill, and strainers. And what this is, is, excuse me, I'm losing my breath here.
You must be getting older, like some of us.
Well, I went up the stairs here and then jumped-
You know, isn't that terrible? Like, when I was a kid, you run up and downstairs like nobody's business. Now you go up three steps, and you're like, seriously? Seriously? Three flights of stairs? And you're like, gasping.
So I, is this, can you hear me? Okay. All right, we'll start all over here. As you know, we're gonna be replacing a new boiler. And with that, we should be doing flush, fill, and strainers. Again, it's a lot of money, but I do have it in my budget for this. So this is the time to do it. Excuse me.
And this went through both courthouse and finance. And Brent, guaranteed that this will pay for itself by lot less, less-
Well-
Maintenance.
One of the reasons we're replacing one of the boilers is the system itself was dirty. It had never been put strainers in and stuff. So with that, this will correct that problem.
So, and there's 47, was it?
Forty-seven strainers. We are also gonna be putting another one on the boiler that we do have.
Okay. And he does have enough in his budget, and if he runs short of, if there's some other major repair, we'll have to address that at the time. But we're, we're at the home stretch of the year, so hopefully, we, knock on wood, we don't have any significant problems with the-
Right. So we're looking at probably this within the end of this month or next month to do the whole project, if this is approved.
So, we are looking for a motion that-
It's 50- Fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six. Yeah.
I think a motion to approve.
Motion by-
Fill or whatever.
John, fill and flush, flush and fill, 47.
And add strainers, yes.
Strainers in the boiler system, in the amount of 57.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And we'll go on a short break. Short break. I know, we're-
Back to work.
John wants to stay here till 1:00 today.
11:00.
All right, Carrie? Let's, we got some additional documents from Steve and this is.
So the information that you have before you is the information, all of the information that's been provided by our consultant with the recommendation of how to align positions within the 14 grades of the study. As I mentioned earlier, with the information, I guess there was some confusion, so I apologize in advance that you didn't get the information in the packet. It wasn't, apparently we weren't clear that you wanted that information, so.
No, you said that there were some changes. What?
There are a few individuals, a few positions, not individuals, a few positions that are, we're reviewing, doing some final, just to ensure that we have them graded correctly. But we're just very, a very few.
Okay.
So we don't expect, well, there may be some minor changes, but.
Okay.
Is this the presentation that was presented to us in closed session?
Yes.
So this is what we were just, so we've all, we've seen this before, the press hadn't seen this, but it's nice to.
Yes.
But this was in closed session and I didn't, it wasn't really necessary, I mean, it's nice to get ahead of it before, ask our questions prior to, but I think it was a good dialogue and.
Is, are some of the positions that are being reviewed, the supervisor positions in human services?
They've requested that, yes.
Can I give you my opinion? I just, I just think that historically, all the supervisors over there have not made the same amount, and according to this, it appears that they are.
Yes.
And I just think there's definitely different requirements among each supervisor and different decision-making and supervising requirements that I hope that that's.
Yes, and I can, I can speak to some of that. With that said, with the new jet system, I can tell you that all the supervisors, the requirements and the years of experience and all of that was written the same.
So those supervisors will want to fine tune their individual?
That's been requested to have a distinction, and those are some of the discussions that we've had with the department head. And I think some of the people are somewhat stuck in the band and grade system that we were on as well prior. And, you know, with the distinction of supervisors and who they supervise and how they, who, or, excuse me, how the employee, what the requirements of the employee are, whether or not they would fall in the B or C, and that really isn't a distinction currently with this new system, about who you supervise and what the qualifications of who you're supervising.
And is that how all counties do that?
Under the system, yes. So really where you're getting your points with this is when, if you take this position, if you were going to hire for this position, what are, what are the qualifications for this position? What's the minimum? Is it a bachelor's degree? Is it a two-year degree? Is it no degree? Decision-making comes in there with some points, as well as how many years of experience are you expecting a new, if somebody, if you're hiring for this position, how many years of experience would you expect this person to have? And does that include supervisory experience?
And then that would be negotiated at hire, where you would start out, I suppose, start in that, start on that scale.
Right.
The, I think, I think the question that you're having or that you're hearing is, is there a way to, or if there are significant differences, can we address? I mean, if there are significant differences between those super, oh, they, they would fall under different, they should be, if there's, if there's significantly different duties or responsibilities, they should be sep, there should be a separate, that fall in a separate area.
Yes, and I, and I would agree with that, but what I can tell you is currently what we have as far as information, they are very similar.
So that, if, if there's a.
So the job description of.
The jet pack. I'm speaking just specifically to the jet pack that they would have, which then transfers to the job description, but those essential duties, that's really what's pointed. And again.
So you'd, if someone has a, if someone feels that they're being put in the wrong class, they're, now is the time to say, you know.
Yes.
These things aren't being, these aren't being reflected in where I'm at.
That, that's correct. And we do have, again, this group that you're referencing, we've, we've heard some information from them and there's a few others out there. And again, we're, this is a work in progress, if you will, I feel like we're at the tail end of it, but those are all, those are all things that we're going to consider. If something was missed, we'll certainly reconsider.
And who makes, who then makes that final decision? The Mark Goldberg will review that? And, I mean, it's, it's not something done here.
That's correct.
He would do it to make sure it balances within the whole.
Correct. Yes, what you want to really be careful about is adjusting any one position within, you know, the table specifically, you want it all to align with other positions within the county and also with the market study that's been done and all the data that's been pulled in as well.
Well, I, I, I agree. We're not gonna, we have to be, this, I mean, once you implement, it's, it's gotta, you can't adjust one or two unless they can show, you know, where, they need to, they need to show that I, these are my responsibilities, so I should be here instead.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's, and that's, that's fair. If they're, if their job duties are requiring more or have more than, than it should be reflected. But I just wanted to, that, that this isn't an arbitrary, I mean, if it's going to be changed, it's not arbitrary from, from us, this is the, this is the, this is Mark and then the company, David Drone, that say, oh, we see this as reasonable, and yes, this was not included before, so then you'll be here.
Absolutely.
But I mean, it's, I think it's very important and that we note that it's, it's not an arbitrary, this is, this has to fall within the guidelines of this program, so that's.
Right. Any other questions that I can try to answer?
Well, I mean, we knew that there would be questions and, and.
Sure.
Pros and, pros and cons of these type of studies. There's, there's always. Always. The negatives with the positives, so. There will be, I'm sure everyone will have questions, Carrie, you're available for questions individually, or Amanda, and if any staff, I mean, I encourage you, if you, if you have questions or have concerns, that you might not, I mean, certainly ask the question and get, get the clarification that you, they're looking for. If you have, if you, I don't know if it's an appeal, but if it's a, if you think you're placed in the wrong position, certainly get, get what's needed, you know, get what, you would probably be the first point of contact to say.
Correct.
These, these are things that you should include or, or expand upon if the, if there was enough information, so. But that information be then passed on to.
For reconsideration, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions on the comp study at this time?
When will, when will you have the updated or the whatever?
Any, any of the tweaks that we're working on? I would hope by, certainly by the next board meeting, if there's updates, I could certainly bring that back to the board at that point, just to keep you in the loop as far as any of the updates. We were hoping to have it ready, but Mark was on vacation last week prior to the board, so.
So, I mean, obviously, though, we can always, if there's a correction or something, we can always, or a different job description, things will always be change, always be able to change or add a new job description and.
Yes.
Is the ongoing review of that, would that be at Mark's, would that be with this company still?
Correct, so we were, as we get through this, the intent is to have maintenance on this, so we're talking about what that's going to look like, obviously reviewing a portion of the job descriptions ongoing, making sure that we're still calibrated within, within market.
So would this be with this company or our?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that was my intent, because when I went out for the proposal, I also added in the, the maintenance phase of this.
Okay, so the current person that's doing our review of band and grade will not be employed by us.
Correct.
Or there won't be a need or contract.
That's right.
So that, that expense there will be zero and then it'll be this expense, so.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll have a question. You mean this big list?
This big list.
There are some gaps in here.
Yes.
There was some gaps in there, some positions not included in here at this time, so there's updating of this list as we move forward. What would be implemented?
We're hoping for implementation in January, and this was in the budget, the cost of implementation of this was put into the budget. No, there won't be any cuts.
Well, there would be, at most it'd be a freeze, so there would be no reduction till the, and, and I don't think there's many that are real, I mean, there, it won't be too long before that catches up. And that's, and that's some things where we'll discuss further down the road, but there, we don't, we don't plan, I don't, my opinion, and I'm sure the rest of the board, we don't, we're not going to cut to pay for anyone.
Some of the positions I saw that were admitted are back in there, so.
Yeah, it was, it's a work in progress, yes. Well, and some, just so the board is aware, some of the difficulty with this, and again, my hope is that we'll correct all of this going forward, some of these positions are called one thing in our payroll system, another thing on other spreadsheets that are kept, and then with market comparisons called something else. So we are working on aligning, aligning all job titles so that it matches all the way through. That's been some of the difficulty. And we had some positions in this county that as we did comparisons, we could match the job duties, but not the title, so.
Well, is it, I see you only have, there's only two types of social workers on here, but we have several different types of social workers over there. So do they all fall under?
Yes.
What the social, what the other social workers are.
Correct, they were all written similar, because the qualifications and, and such were very similar, and then job duties were different. So in the job description, some of the job duties would be different, similar but different.
So that, is that something that will be in the tweaked one? Will they either be all, well, we have just, we, I see we don't have a child and family services, social worker is not listed on here.
Right, as I understood when we looked at all the social worker, all the jet packs, is that they were going to be similar in a category, and Amanda actually just asked me that as far as titling. I think we're probably going to be looking at titling everything social worker.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, if you, on the front page or the inside, that's from David Drown Associates, that Mark Goldberg, who was the point person for us, his credentials are, I mean, he's, this is what he does, I mean, this, you know, there, you're, nobody's going to agree with everyone, everything, so we can, you know, hammer through some of those, but 25 years of compensation classification experience, 10 years in the public sector, former compensation manager, BA in human resources manager, masters in industrial and labor relations from Cornell, so, I mean, he did, he was a very well-versed, and Pat, I'm sure you dealt with him, and he very, very knowledgeable and.
Yes.
Good in this position, so.
If I might.
Point person, not, not the only person.
Right.
The point person on, for Becca County.
Well, if I could add something, Commissioner Nelson? So I, I just want to remind the board, you know, this was, to get to this point, we had to go through a lot of steps, and it started with employees updating their job descriptions, so they're the ones that produced the job descriptions that went to the scoring. And we have had a very large group meeting with not only the business managers, but department heads, that's recorded that we could provide you, if you would find that helpful. I know with the few of the bargaining unit, business managers that were there, they were very appreciative of the effort to provide this type of structure from where we're going, from where we're at. And, you know, the appeals process, although it's, I think it's being defined, it really is, it goes to Mr. Goldberg, so I mean, it's very independent and outside county staff review, and so it's just something I'd make sure, remind the board about that. And comparables, too, were an item that we, we looked really long and hard at, we did not give up on any of the comparables, even regardless if they were beyond, let's say, our budget and our size, if they were a contiguous county, they were included. And so I think that's very important. I think some of the smaller counties were actually excluded, the lower tier counties as well, so I, I think it's, it's really had a lot of work, a lot of contribution, but this is driven by David Drown. I think the best role that we could see that county staff has had is contributing to the job descriptions and then clarifying to answer some questions that he might have, but this is really his study and his table based on the, the, the information that's been provided.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, we will move on the agenda.
I ask Commissioner Nelson, what were you looking for, Carrie?
I was hoping for a formal motion that we could move forward with this.
I don't.
Move forward with what?
I'm sorry.
Move forward with what?
With the implementation of this study.
I don't think I'm ready for that. I think I'd like to, I personally would like to see the.
Well, I think we, we're moving forward with it, I don't know if, if implementation's January 1, I think that's a target date, and I think we can revisit it at our.
That's fine.
Maybe even not at our next meeting, our first meeting in November, October, October, I mean.
And maybe I missed.
Move forward with the.
Correct.
Be tweaks and change.
And everything, and bring it back. Yeah, well, we're, we're doing that, we, I don't know if we need a motion, but.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Where we're at right now, I think we just keep moving to fine tune it.
Okay.
I think we're supporting it, but need, we don't want to make a motion to implement at this time when it's not quite.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yes, the second item that I had was a tweak to our vacation accruals, when I brought this before the board before, and following our negotiations with unions, really our intent was to streamline our vacation accruals, and in doing that, we had some unintended consequences to our supervisor accrual. So what I would propose is going back, if you look at these side by side, which I don't know that you can do, but you do have them in your packet, when we updated the vacation accruals, we eliminated a tier in the middle, so it takes people basically longer to move through. Really, we were very focused on having new employees start and accrue vacation quicker as a, as an attractor, if you will, and then, so we went from, I believe it was five tiers to, let's see here, five tiers to four. So in doing that, again, unintended consequences to those that were at that four and five years, and also at the 10-year mark, it was eight hours less. I don't think we picked up on that, or I didn't pick up with that, I actually think Commissioner Nelson brought that up, that we're missing a tier, and so what I would ask the board is to, again, one more time, update the vacation accruals to the new updated rate that we had previously on the supervisor, and then implement that across for all employees that are non-union in policy.
All right, entertain a motion to approve. Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, any discussion?
And I'd just like to say that the people that it's affected, we did not intend to do this, so, we're sorry.
Yeah, unintentional consequences, as I stated.
Okay, did I, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion kicked.
All right, thank you. And if I may, are we having a session at the end?
Probably.
Is that still to be determined, or?
I don't know.
I just.
Why don't, I don't think we have anything that we've gotten in our packet to look at, I mean, so.
Yeah, the last, I had handed out what I wanted to go through, and I can redo that, but we didn't get to it the last time, so I was just going to go forth with what I had handed out previously.
Why don't you come in and we'll see how much time, I know John's got to get moving.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
I just, I just wanted to be prepared, so if you need copies of what I, do you want me to, okay.
Come, come in and we'll see what, where we, it'll be, it'll be short.
Okay.
All right, Steve, I think we're next.
Mr. Chair.
Morning Mitch, Steve.
Got a list of things to go through from both NRM and environmental services committees.
Steve has mentioned that the solid waste assessment will, will do at a later date, we don't need to.
That's fine, we'll pull that, and we'll, I'd like to have an actual board, we'll put together a PowerPoint on that, as far as how we're going to implement it.
Okay.
How it's going to be administered, probably the next board meeting. With items that we have for natural resource management, we'll go through those first. First request is to approve the fall timber sales, so we can have a sale and approve the tracks that we had, they were in the board packet.
Okay, you have them in your packet, the annual timber sales, entertain a motion to approve the sales.
I'll make that motion to approve the timber sales.
Okay.
Fall timber sales.
There's a motion to approve the 10 tracks as offered for the fall '23 timber auction. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is a capital expenditure request to purchase a half-ton pickup. We were looking for a pickup. It's about impossible to get them off the state contractor, or through any sort of pre-pricing through government agencies. And we've looked at different local options. I think you had the information in your board packet. Usually, by the time you get around to seeking board approval to purchase it, it's sold already. And so, what we'd like to do is have authorization to spend up to, I think it's $48,000?
Yep.
Forty-eight thousand.
And this money would come out of what department, what?
Resource.
Resource Development, so it was, it's not a levy. It's, it's be funded through timber sales and, and ongoing timber sales. And we have a significant reserve in that, so there won't be any budgetary needs, you know, for this.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, to approve the department head to purchase a half-ton truck not to exceed $48,000. Any discussion? And again, he had multiple quotes from every area dealer, and just looking for a reasonable one. And the one that he wanted was low on, that one sold before we even got to first meeting. So, we want to give some latitude to go ahead and purchase one of the quoted pickups. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I, I just, I, I found it hard to believe that a bare-bones crew cab was, the low price now is $48,000. I'm just like.
I thought that was low.
Man, that's, I thought that was high. Holy cow. But.
That's because, that's what happens when you buy all them electric cars.
Yeah.
So, we voted on that, so we're good with that.
Third item is the bike path between Denton Locks and the city is, there's some spots that are, we got problems with the roots coming up through the asphalt, and we'd like to put an overlay on part of that. And so, we went out and got two quotes. Low quote was to driveway services to do an overlay on the pavement on a 900-foot stretch, basically be from the city going out towards Denton Locks. And they'd, they'd dig out the bad spots, take care of the roots.
And I think John asked for a chemical treatment on those roots when they're exposed, so.
We did that, we did some purpose application to those locations already, so over the last two weeks.
None of, they exposed some roots that they don't dig out, probably even treat those where a root.
When they're exposed, yep.
I'll say keep.
I think it's a very high, high-used trail, and.
It needs it. Yep. The price per square yard's not, or per ton's not too bad.
Okay, good. For that small quantity, that's pretty, it's.
Hundred, hundred bucks, including the tack and stuff, and clean up, and dig itself out, so. Make a motion to approve the bike path overlay with driveway service for $9,000.
Hey, we have motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to environmental services, every year, the county has to certify what the market value is, market price to dispose of solid waste from the county. And what that does is it sets the minimum price that we can set our tip fee at and still charge a solid waste management tax. If we set a tip fee below that, then the county has to pay at least the solid waste management tax, which is 17% on commercial properties at that, that amount. So, currently, we send out our waste to three different places, to Perm Resource Recovery Facility, the Fargo landfill, and the Polk County landfill. And low price that we bring our garbage to, including disposal and transportation, is to the Fargo landfill at $74.55 per ton. Currently, our disposal fee at the, our landfill, well, that's a total of, I guess I had something in there wrong, but the disposal fee per ton per mile is $51. And, but anyway, there's, so, oh, their disposal fee is at $51, not including transportation, with transportation at $74.55. So, I'd like to have a motion approving resolution 09231E.
And that's in your packet. As stated, it's 51 and 74, 55.
Yep.
And a motion to approve 1E. Motion by Richard. Second by John. Any other discussion? Just the only discussion, I mentioned this earlier, Steve, before you're in here. The open, open house, you had, was really good, appreciated the information, but I was really impressed. I was there when Jim Joy was, was there, and you were talking to him. I was really impressed with the knowledge that he had of, of the, of all the, you know, all the resources and products, and how, how the funding is for that. And I think, and I heard that Dave was there earlier, I wasn't there then, or later. But just make sure we send a thank you to those guys for coming for that, to hear, hear our needs and requests, and, and regional recycling things that they can help with, so.
Thank you. That was good, good. I'm glad that you came. We did have a good, we didn't have a lot of people, but the people that have an influence on our program going into the future.
Yeah.
We had representation from the MPCA and local legislators and the.
And Otter Tail people were there, and, so, when I was there. So, anyway, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item, our demolition landfill. The current cell is about full, so we've been designing an expansion of our landfill, and we also are going to be digging a new cell, so we bid it out. The low bid was $252,560 to Dennis Drews Incorporated. We had a lot of interest in this project. We bid it out electronically. There was, I believe it was 11 bidders, but Dennis Drews was, Incorporated was a little bid, and so like a board motion just allowing us to enter into a contract with Dennis Drews to, Incorporated to construct a new demo cell.
Okay, we have the contract in your packet. Nice that it's a local contractor, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by.
Second.
John, second by Richard, to enter into agreement with Dennis Drews for the work as presented in your packet. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item is a request to purchase some radios. The next three items were brought to our environmental services committee meeting. They didn't have time to get into the board packet, so I gave you some information for that. I'd like a approval to purchase 10, 10 radios.
These are just the handheld radios for communication within the, and the environmental?
So, what it is, is we have four radios out there. They're Motorolas like these, but they're outdated. We can't get them repaired anymore, and we'd like to buy some new ones to replace those. This will also be set up so that if need be, they can get into the same frequency as the highway department, so that in case of emergency, they could coordinate staff easier. We could have bought six, but the price, they give a volume discount, 15% volume discount if you buy 10 of them, for the amount of $10,362. This also includes your FCC license for five years, and also, or 10 years, plus, these radios have a five-year warranty, so seems like a pretty good deal. We did look to see if there's other radios. They're just, there's not any, anybody else around here that supplies these. Any questions?
That'd be complete separate channel with highway, so you'd have to switch channels.
You'd have, you, you could go to the highway channel, though.
Yeah, yes.
With discussion, committee?
No, it's definitely, definitely needed, those guys. That's a big, that's a big place out there.
We did have a little discussion on walkie-talkie phones, but then that would be a big expense, just, so we looked at that also, and the cost savings wouldn't be there. These are, what are they, about $1,000?
$1,000 per phone, a little over.
And they should last, well, five-year warranty, so we're hoping they last quite a bit longer, so.
Move to approve the purchase of Motorola radios at $10,362.90.
Second.
Second by Richard, motion by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a quote to sandblast and paint our liquid petroleum tank that we just, we moved on site by the recycling facility. We got three quotes. There's some information in your packet that I gave out there. They're actually very competitive. For two of them, there was Eco-Sandblast was at $6,800 to Sandblast and Paint. Advanced Sandblast and Paint LLC came in at $6,200. And A1A Sandbasting had a quote of $8,500. I gave specs, I asked for some specs on both the primer and the paint. There was a question in finance about, one said a little bit less paint than the other one. I did call one of the vendors, and they do measure them. They got a gauge when they're painting it. And I was actually, I talked to the guy from Eco-Sandblast. He said, you know, in reality, there's not much difference, and as long as you got a thickness that's close to the same, the, you know, it's not that precise. So, I guess I would, I'd like board approval to award this work to Advanced Sandblast and Paint LLC for $6,200.
Okay, and the, the other two things, line items, the dispenser and the paint prime, like two gas dispensers, they're not included because we don't need those painted, correct?
That's correct. They're, they're new items, and they're made out of aluminum, so they're not going to be painted.
Okay. So, entertain, so you see the other numbers, they're not relevant. 6,200 is the, is that include everything, tax?
That's everything.
Tax and?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard to approve Advanced Sandblast for the amount of 6,200 to paint the propane tank.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item is doing some wood grinding. In the past, for the past three, four years, the county and the city has have co-opted on grinding the brush at the city yardway site. And we've used the same grinder. In the past, we've, I've gotten quotes from different vendors. He's always been the low quote. And what I'd like to do is to use him to do this grinding. So, he'd grind up the, the city site. The city's going to pay a portion of that. The county contributes towards that as well, because there's people that are from outside the city and the surrounding area that haul and brush there as well. We also have him grind up clean wood waste out at our transfer station site, so you get a lot of pallets and boards and stuff that normally would go into our demo landfill. He runs this through, we've developed a spec that people can utilize for bedding, or mulching, whatever they want, I guess. But he runs it through his grinder. They remove all the nails, and then we're going to, we're going to try to sell that to help recover some of our costs. But, so he came back this year, and he gave a, his quote was up a little bit on his per-unit price, as far as a per ton, that he runs through his machine. But the total amount, the estimated cost for us is going to be about $18,000 to do this. And I guess my ask is that we can, we can spend up to $26,775 to contract or toward this work to Harbo Mulch, to grind it, and then we're going to, the difference between what my ask is, and this $26,000 will be getting back from the city.
Say that again?
So, we, we'll be spending $26,000, close to $27,000 to do this grinding, but then the city will reimburse us for their portion of grinding at the city site.
Cost to county would be.
About $18,000.
Okay.
So, the city's going to pay back 70% of, at the land, at their site?
At their site.
And then you pay the mobile. Call at the landfill. Okay, got you.
And he showed 2022 was about $21,000 and some change.
That's correct.
So, it's went up.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, to approve up to $26,775 Harbo Mulch to brush grind at the city Detroit Lakes yard and Beckton County Solid Waste. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Jim.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning. First item for your consideration, we're requesting approval of a quote we received for wetland delineation work. We need to do this on one of our future projects where we plan to grade widen the road, which we therefore impact wetlands along this road. So, we solicited two quotes from two different vendors, and the low quote came to Houston Engineering, who has done a quote work, or this type of work for us before, in the amount of $10,841. So.
Move to approve the quote from Houston.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Richard, to approve the $10,841 quote from Houston Engineer for delineation wetlands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just, I do want to point out, we used to be able to do this with soil and water, and they did it for us, you know, free of charge, basically, or, but the state and Bowser has, has added so many more points and so much more detail that it got to, it's a big job now, and they can't just go out and, so, more regulations cost more money, and that's where we're at today. I mean, it had cost before, but again, more cost, 10 grand, that's basically putting a couple, a couple sticks out there. Nope, here's a wetland. My feet are wet. Okay.
Yeah, next item for your consideration, we're looking to dispose of some highway property or some equipment. We have our 2009 tandem plow truck. This was scheduled for auction upon receipt of our, our latest truck, new truck purchase, which is coming, so we would like to sell that. And we also have a older pup trailer. This is essentially a, a large trailer that's pulled behind our, our trucks when we haul gravel and things, you know, for additional capacity. This one is old, rusted, and cannot be, meet the DOT certification, but we felt it could be useful to a farmer or, or somebody else like that. So, we'd like to sell.
Is that a derogatory mark?
Well, off-road. Or, they, they could fix it up, too, to make it.
It is.
Move to approve.
Motion by John, second by Richard, to dispose of the pup trailer and a tandem plow truck. Any other discussion? Just, just a question. We do have reserved trucks that,
Yes.
So, it's not something, we still have the reserves. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
The next two items are final payments. First one is for work on County Road 37. This was completed early this spring by Mark Sand and Gravel. The work is complete and satisfactory. It actually turned out quite well, rides nicely. So, we're requesting approval of final payment to Mark Sand and Gravel.
Okay.
Move 1F.
Second.
Motion second to approve 1F. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Next is final payment to, on County Road 39. This was a grade widening project, mostly completed last year. We had some seeding of the bean slopes and that, that was completed this spring, and now we're looking to make final payment to Drews excavating on that. Work was completed satisfactorily, and we're ready to wrap that project up as well.
Okay. Entertained.
1G.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, to approve 1G. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything wrapping up?
Yep.
Ready for winter?
Well, not yet, but.
Yeah, hopefully. It looks like a good forecast so far. I think harvest is going to be early.
The dry weather.
Oh, there's bean fields that are just turned so fast, it's, so.
Well, there should be no construction that impedes them there.
And hopefully, there'll be no mud.
Yeah.
Mud on roads if this continues. It should be, be, early beet harvest went well, I think, so, the opening. What's, what happened so far? Anything else before our, for open session? Anything in our open session? Anything else?
No, that would be everything, yeah.
We've got everything on the agenda and nothing to add, so we will, we're going to enter into closed session. This will be to discuss IT infrastructure, motion to close the meeting pursuant to 13 DL5 subdivision 3D. Review, receive security briefings and reports, discuss issues related to security systems to discuss emergency response procedures, and to discuss security deficiencies in or recommendations regarding public service, infrastructure, and facilities. If disclosure of that information discussed would pose a danger to the public safety or compromise security, procedures, or responses. The subject to be discussed is Becker County Information Technology Infrastructure. Judy Dodd presenting. And we'll take a couple minutes here to.
Oh, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to enter closed session.
Motion by.
Pursuant to the statute.
I will second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And thank you for those here and those online.